Mr. Francisco.
Here.
Mr. DeSaro.
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Ms. Munoz.
Present.
This is McKnight.
Here.
This is Lewis.
Present.
Don't worry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This is a public meeting in the Borough Council, Borough District, Kansas City, New Jersey. Notice has been given and according to P L nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, annual notice or revision was made into full of section thirteen of the Act. Excuse me. We have public hearings on the community block grants for year forty-nine and we need to prioritize the requests. The two are, they both deal with the senior center. The first from Yowie Stowe as for the health fair and transportation needs and other programs. And the second one is for drainage for the center. So I think the way to listen is pretty much one and two as well. I think we should. Anybody disagree?
No.
That's good.
Okay.
At this time, we have hearings from the public. Anybody have any comments? See, no one had declared a public hearing close. Okay, I need approval minutes for no matter the teeth, please.
So moved.
Sir.
All favor?
Yes.
Hi.
I'm.
So be it.
Okay, we have correspondence. Gloria Yen for the Board of Adjustment. At County Union, Human Services, about Union County's code balloon emergency shelter initiative. The Providence Fire Department Junior Membership, Cooper Nelson. The Providence Fire Department Officer Elections, which will be next Wednesday at eight o'clock. And we're all invited if you want to go. It'll be, I think, they told me no officers are going to be changing this year, so it should be pretty quick. And Rebecca Caniglio, Neighborhood Concerns. I think I should, should address this to council. This has been going on for two years, maybe. And she's had difficult service at the neighbors. I have personally sent the police department over, the fire department over there, the Board of Health. I know the police have been there a number of times. Bernadette, I know you've had the Board of Health over there. We've had Keith over there and they have found no violations. And if there are some violations, like idling trucks, they, they have gone, the police have gone there and the truck hasn't been idling at the time. So they can't give a ticket unless they see it happen. I think the, it can't be idling more than three minutes, I believe. The other thing is Bernadette, myself and Chief Hen met with the Caniglios and we explained everything to them and they understood. And I thought they understood, but now this letter comes. One thing that I offered, and I know Bernadette and the chief, in fact, Chief Gasly offered was mediation. You know, there's a lot of people in town that have problems with their neighbors and they want to, they want to solve them. And we offer mediation. It's a good way to, to, you know, control people's concerns. They have rejected that more than once. So at this point, I may feel for them, but there's legally nothing we can do. And, you know, that's all I could say about the matter, quite honestly. If there was a way we could help them, I'd be more than willing to do it, but, you know, there isn't. I mean, you've read the letter, it's public record. There are people gathering in their yards and talking in the afternoon, things like that. It's not illegal. I mean, they both live on a corner lot, so their saw yard is their backyard, too. I live on a corner, I get it. So, you know, they park their cars in the street and they have our time backing out. You know, I live up on the end of Livingston Avenue. There's always cars, especially during a sleigh riding time, you know? It just is what it is. So as much as we feel for them, we've done everything we can to try to, you know, mediate the situation, but, you know, it's, it's two neighbors that just don't get along. And, you know, I don't know whose fault, it's probably a little, a, a, a both. Who knows? But, you know, for, there's nothing legally that we can do and I think we've, you've even got involved in this before, right? And I think you agree with my assessment?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
We've come above and beyond as far as I can tell. You know, there's just nothing, some of her complaints are just, there's just nothing you can do about.
Right, right. As much as you'd like to, you can't.
Yeah.
So, okay, any questions?
No, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Okay, let's go to Council Business Administration, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two two seventy-seven is a resolution accepting a grant from the hazardous discharge site for remediation fund, public entity program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the Department of Environmental Protection. Basically, this resolution is for the application and award of an N J, a New Jersey, D E P grant for forty thousand seven hundred and three dollars, which is associated with site remediation at the Ping Wang site. The work has already been completed and the borough has been working with Colliers Engineering to complete the grant documents in order to receive the money. So we've already expended the money, we're just looking to get it back and Colliers is helping us.
Okay. Community Activities, Pete.
Resolution twenty twenty-two two seventy-eight is a salary resolution. This resolution is associated with hiring basketball coaches. Is that, Brenda, is that the program that's the real young children in the gym over here?
Tricam and special needs.
Oh, okay, okay, great. That's, that's, and this, this resolution hires, what is it? Looks like four individuals for that program.
Great, thank you. Finance, Matt.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two seven nine is a resolution authorizing payment to bill's payable list in the amount of three million, nine thirty, six fifty-two thirty-nine. Some of these significant items include our Union County, fourth quarter county purpose and open space tax of three point three nine eight zero four zero, our New Providence Library December payment of eighty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Also, Strikes Sales Corp., a power loader for stretchers into the limousine, I'm sorry, to the ambulance, wish they were limousines, right? Fifty-five thousand zero sixty-nine and Rapid Pump, two new force main pumps for Water Department, forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eight oh is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special items of revenue in the twenty twenty-two budget pursuant of N J S forty A four dash eight seven, chapter one fifty-nine, P L nineteen forty-eight, National Opioid Settlement twenty twenty-two, additional. So this is a additional settlement, monies in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents. This is payment one of eighteen annual installments. This is on top of the two thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars that we've already received in our opioid settlement. We are looking at ways to be able to utilize those funds, right? So we're looking for guidance on how we can spend them and where we can spend them. And we're very grateful for those funds to be able to put to work. Hopefully educating our youth and our citizens about the dangers of opioids.
The size of that settlement is determined by the population in the community, correct? Okay. Number, number of people. Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-one and two eighty-two are resolutions providing for the insertion of any special items of revenue in the twenty twenty-two budget pursuant of N J S forty A four dash eight seven, chapter one fifty-nine, P L nineteen forty-eight, Safe Routes to School, one is for the twenty sixteen preliminary engineering and design, the other for twenty eighteen. So what is, we have received to cover the cost of the very good news. For twenty sixteen, we received one hundred and eighty-three thousand and for twenty eighteen, it is two hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-three is a resolution authorizing a cancellation of taxes receivable. This grants Vito Gallo a hundred percent disabled veteran status and refunds overpayments of partial twenty twenty-two taxes in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. And it cancels the twenty twenty-three Q one and two taxes in the amount of seven thousand forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents, as well as all future installments.
Well, you're on a roll, so you might as well do engineering and construction.
Thank you. Two eighty-four is a resolution approving shared service agreement for wastewater operations and maintenance between the Borough of New Providence and the City of Summit. We actually had a resolution a few weeks back, I think it was last meeting that we passed. This actually is amending that resolution and includes a two percent increase over some previous items for work week services and weekend pump station inspection services. Resolution two eighty-five is a resolution authorizing provision of a loan pursuant to the Borough of New Providence Affordability Assistance Program for the purchaser of an affordable housing unit. So this here is a, our Affordable Assistance Program is providing a loan, a zero interest loan for the purchase of one of our affordable housing units in town.
Okay, we have public safety, couple raffle licenses, two for the M P H S, P T S A, eleven seven six and eleven seven seven, and another two for Community Service Association, eleven seven eight and eleven seven nine. Both, all the applications have been properly prepared and reviewed. Resolution two eighty-six is a requisition for elite emergency lights for fourteen thousand oh seven five and seventy-four cents. And this is under the state contract. What this is, is for up, upfitting the lights for the new police cars. You know, and I had this discussion with Dan today, you know, the, the companies, well, these are explorers, which have been used for years. You think the insides would stay the same, so the equipment would fit year after year? No. So the two new cars need to, need new equipment and it's a shame you can't just, you know, put the, the old equipment into new cars. It used to be like that, but, you know, things change.
So these, these are the two new cars that we received as a result of two losses during the Ides Storm.
Right.
So these weren't purchases that were intended to be made, they were as a result of them being lost in the flood.
Right. Okay. Public Works, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-seven is a resolution advancing Michael Keenan to Step G in the Public Works Department of the Borough of New Providence. And so this is an advancement for Michael in accordance with the Teamsters contract. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-eight is a resolution approving the requisition number R two two zero two one twenty-seven for Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company in an amount not to exceed six thousand two hundred and forty dollars, Bergen County Co-op Contract number twenty-one dash thirteen for the wastewater treatment pump installation. This is approving the purchase of an expansion joint. So I feel like when we go over these public work resolutions, we see Rapid Pump and Meter Service. They are a company that, that we do use for parts and certain pieces for our wastewater treatment plant. So last week, our last council meeting, I did go over some of the short term and long term goals of the wastewater treatment plant. And so this resolution, along with some of the next ones, are just coincide with that in, in that Anthony Carnaval is putting some of that capital budget money that's set aside for the plant and he's putting that to work, upgrading and improving the plant. So that's part of this. So also, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-nine is a resolution accepting the proposal of Colliers Engineering and Design for Professional Engineering Services regarding the twenty twenty-two sanitary sewer lining project. So this is an approval to accept the proposal by the engineering firm. What they're going to be doing is be, they're going to be lining and restoring the sanitary sewer mains and what happens over time is that they develop cracks, the pipes become disjointed, there's root intrusion along with other things. I think the manhole covers start to leak and what happens is it allows extra groundwater and rainwater to go in and it just inundates the, our systems. So this will help with that. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two ninety is a resolution approving the requisition for Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company in an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, Bergen County Co-op Contract number twenty-one dash thirteen for wastewater treatment mechanical bar screen. So this is actually a really important piece of equipment for the wastewater treatment plant. They have been waiting, I think, for this piece for a long time. Anthony Carnaval and this company actually designed it to fit specifically into our plant, so it wasn't an off-the-shelf type of item. And what the, the use for this bar screen is, is that it, it become, well, what, let me just backtrack a little bit. Before the installation of this new, this new bar screen, Anthony sort of retrofitted himself a piece of equipment to catch all the debris that comes into that catch basin, things like rags and diapers and things that are not supposed to be flushed down the toilet or, you know, sent into the sewer system. And it was a manual process. Every couple hours, Anthony or one of the men down there would have to go in and clean it out. And that was round the clock, twenty-four seven. Necesitated a lot of extra manpower and overtime because someone had to go in every single night and clean this.
Yeah, at eleven P M.
At, at eleven P M. every night. One of those employees had to be at the plant to scrape and clean this screen. So this new piece of equipment will, you know, negate that. So that is a huge, huge improvement. So, yeah, that's, I'm sure they're, they're happy about that.
Let's have a question. So when I read it, so, yeah, somebody's in there constantly around the clock and it's like the five gallon thing that they empty every single solitary time. A lot of it kind of seems like it's preventable or something that maybe we can, it seems like an education issue.
Yeah.
So maybe, I know we talked about posting stuff, but maybe we can try to explore other ways to educate people around what they can and cannot flush and should and should not flush. Because it seems like a lot of this, we can improve just by our habits and processes as residents.
Yeah.
Maybe we can think about, I know you guys were going to post something, but maybe we can come up with other ideas to educate people.
One of the biggest culprits in the wastewater treatment plant is flushable pipes that are truly not flushable. Even though they say it on the package, they are not flushable, they are not biodegradable. They get stuck in the mechanisms at the wastewater treatment plant, which is why Tony actually created this bar screen himself to kind of keep it out of the pumps. Prior to him installing that, they actually were dismantling pumps almost once a week to try and get them unclogged and unstuck. So this has been, even though the overtime is there, it's well worth the money.
Yeah, for sure.
But I think it's a good idea, actually. As someone who's had their home backed up twice on wipes from my children.
Were you that, was that you flushing wipes?
And one of them was on New Year's Day, so it's not a very great New Year's start for me, not too good. But, yeah, now maybe, maybe a little something up on the website.
Yeah, we'll be posting something.
Like we do with recycling, something like that.
Yeah. I think we spoke about it at the last council meeting, it's avoid drain pain. So we'll be posting what not to flush down the toilet or to pour down your drain.
So pouring down the drain, too. That's like cooking oil and stuff. Try to make a very conscious effort to dispose of oil properly. That one is not as known.
One thing that I, I've seen over the years, and I'm sure you have too, we do that in Citroform, which is, you know, they put a balloon in the pipe and then they shoot liquid, it's poly whatever, and it lines the pipe, then, then they pull the balloon out. The thing is, when you have loops in there and you're throwing, just flushing these things down there, they get caught up on the roots and then you have clogs before it even gets to the, the plant. So guys are out there all the time, you know, with the cameras and, and, and doing the road to router thing.
Right, which is why we want to line those pipes, too, so that there is no
It, it's extremely expensive. We've, we've, we've really done a lot of work over the years since two thousand and, but there's still a lot more to do. I've always said the infrastructure here is very old, so we just gotta keep up with it, do a little reach here.
I have one more, hold on. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two ninety-one is a resolution authorizing agreement between the Borough of New Providence and the County of Union regarding conservation center leave for disposal. The borough has a memorandum of agreement with the county that allows the borough to bring leaves to the county conservation center. Union County recently contracted with Valers to run the county conservation center. So this agreement between the county and Valers does not change the memorandum of agreement that's in place currently between us and the county. That's it.
Okay. Discussion volumes?
I actually have something. This is just asking each of the council liaisons. So as this year is ending and we're looking into twenty twenty-three, we want to go back and talk to all of our committees about how this year went and try to have them start putting together goals for next year. And then also, they all, they should check through their membership to see who still wants to be on the committees. We usually do that at the reorg meeting in January, but we're going to push that back, give the committees a little extra time to ensure the people that are on their committee want to stay on the committee and that the council members each get an opportunity to talk to their committees. So between now and the beginning of January, if everybody can talk to their committees, namely around the council advisory committees, that would be great. And then we can come back and go from there.
That was good.
I just had one quick item on the timing of the agendas. I just wanted to know if, I know you guys are always waiting on stuff in order to get them done. Is it possible, and I don't know if this is a legal thing, like, could we, are we allowed to have them, let's say preliminarily?
I, I would not recommend putting an agenda out that is not final.
So if you're waiting on one item, let's say, right? And you think it's going to come in Thursday or Friday, could we have a copy of preliminary agenda, say Thursday, and then when that item comes in, it comes in? I'm just asking again, I'm, I'm not trying to put any more work on you guys, I don't know how much, much.
So in, in years past, there have been times where things have been added to the agenda, which then in turn, you may have read it on Thursday and put it away.
Right.
Again, is picking it up on Monday and looking at it for the first time, so she has all the information. So things have fallen back that way, which is why we have traditionally held the agenda for you until we have it complete. If you want it in that, we can do it that way for you. But again, I, I think it's, it's a process thing, so you're, you would have to decide that amongst yourselves if that's what you really
Well, if you're waiting for one thing, you can always call Bernadette and say, listen, what's the status of this? So we can, you, you can find out.
Yeah, no, I, I know, it was a couple of years ago, we talked about putting out a, like a preliminary agenda and then, and then working on it, you know, throughout the week or whatever. Because we know these five items are definitely going to be there and then, and those, so we just put those five out there, you know? I just, the only reason I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it up is I think, like, today I had some questions that were late, I didn't, I was unable to get to them till late today, but I probably could have got to them earlier last week or later last week, right? So that's all, just thinking through whether or not it's, it's worth it.
I feel like putting it up piecemeal, you're more apt to miss things.
But if, again, like, if you know there's five items there, like, those five items are on there, so if it's, if there's engineering stuff, you know, you know those things are happening, you can start reviewing and, and doing your homework on it, right? Finance, maybe some things are waiting on, so we might not want to put that on.
Matt is that we don't hold the agenda unless we know that we're actually getting the information. So, you know, usually when we're waiting on something, it's because it's from an outside source that, you know, they haven't provided it to us, but they have guaranteed us that it is coming. So I wouldn't, we wouldn't hold the agenda just because we think something might be coming. So like, again, again, it's up to you guys if you want it piecemeal, we'll give it to you however you want.
Yeah.
I, I think it's, it's a slippery slope, though.
Yeah, just to dovetail off what, what Matt was saying. I, I, I do like the idea of getting it early, subject to a possible addition, if that doesn't cause too much work on, on your behalf. The other thing is that, for me at least, and maybe others feel the same way, Thursday to me is a real, kind of should be really a drop dead and get it on a Thursday, I'll tell you why. By getting it on a Thursday, it provides the opportunity to kind of quickly go through it and then surface questions on a, on a Friday, so you're going into the weekend, you have kind of your ducks in order and you could then review everything with all your questions being answered. Getting it on a Friday evening, to me, kind of creates a little bit of, of, it jams you a bit because what happens is over the weekend, if you have questions, you're generally not surfacing them until Monday and then you have the meeting, you got to quickly turn around to Tuesday. So if, if, if that could be accommodated, that would be wonderful.
I defer to you when
So what will happen is the only thing for the next agenda will be what I have by Monday, so that I can put the agenda together so that it goes to the administrator on Thursday to be published on Thursday. So you're cutting your timeframe on, on items going on.
A lot, a lot more work goes into, into putting the agenda together than I think you guys realize and all of those attachments and all of the resolutions and all of the stuff that Paul passed to review. So things may not be as timely as they are now.
So is Thursday a good expectation, or are you saying yes or no?
I'm, I'm saying to do Thursday and guarantee a Thursday? You're cutting the time, the lead time. You have to, now we're, we're pushing it back from Wednesday, it's got to be probably Monday afternoon or Tuesday to give me enough time to put it together to link it.
Okay, so what is the target, then? That we're shooting for, just, just so I
Well, I'm, I'm saying if you want it by Thursday, we're going to have to tell department heads.
The target is always Thursday.
The target is always Thursday.
So the target is Thursday?
It's always Thursday.
Good. I thought we'd push the meetings back to Tuesday so that we would have that extra Mondays.
So you have Monday to ask questions, correct?
Because she did bring it up before and everybody was in agreement. You, you, you know, you rushed over the weekend, that's why we moved our meetings to Tuesday. So you have a whole extra day, so.
Yeah, and listen, I think, I think, I'm sure Matt's bringing this up for the same reason that I'm also, you know, we're all, we're all trying to do our job and to do our due diligence, obviously, and have time to do that, so, good.
I'm sorry, I left off one important thing online. So in addition to the goals, we're really looking also for a very comprehensive calendar. That's the part I left off, that's very important. So if every committee by January can also say when they're planning on having their meetings and if and when they're planning on having their events, we're trying to lock into like a very solid twenty twenty-three calendar and not by January, at the middle of January.
And what we will say, if you have a committee that has an event planned for, for January, it should be on the next agenda.
Yes. So those are two things, goals and calendar. We'd like to lock those in.
Now, there are certain things that may come up.
Certain things may come up, but if we can get as solid of a calendar as we can, that would be even better.
Okay, go to committee reports. Had a meeting with Dan today. They're working on the finalization of the traffic report for the year to give everybody an update. They're going to give us the final report for next, next council meeting for Q. And then in January, what we're going to do is invite the public And then in January, what we're gonna do is uh invite the public in and they're gonna give a presentation. It'll be a separate meeting from the council meeting like we did the last time. We're not gonna break it up into quadrants like we did. That was only the first time. It's gonna be the whole town. What they've done, what changes that they see they have to make and what's coming up for in the next year and then with next few weeks. Um, uh, there will be no chat with the mayor this month. I just have too much going on and I'm tied up every single night. So resume it in January. Um, wanna bring up across the street, they're having a cookie walk. Anybody wishing to bake cookies? Uh, bring it to them uh on Friday the ninth between five and nine. And the cookie walk, which is always a big hit, is the next day on Saturday, the tenth, from eleven to three at uh three fifty seven Elquid Avenue, which is across the street. And the menorah lighting will be on the twentieth and we have a council meeting. The menorah lighting is at seven o'clock, so it conflicts with our council meeting. So we're gonna change our council meeting to eight o'clock so we can go and then come back here. Okay. Um, thank God, the bridge, the bridge is here. And kids are walking over it and it hasn't collapsed. It looks great, better than the Golden Gate. And uh, you know, it took a long time, but you know, it's finally here. Um, and I want to um thank a lot of people, you know? When I was growing up here, we had a lot of events. Not a lot, but three major ones, when you know, you, we grew up here. You had Memorial Day Parade, you had the Independence Day, and we had the Christmas Walk. That was the three things we had. Now we do a lot of different things, okay? And one of them is we have the tree lighting, the night of a thousand stars. But it always seems that it's the same people and the same local businesses, same organizations that help us create these things. So I just want to give a uh uh a thank you for the diversity committee for hosting. But the Community Activities Department and Allison Smith is did a tremendous job. Our DPW, they helped, Community Service Association, the uh Link New Jersey, the uh New Providence Lions, the Prestige China, China who always gives out this year six big, what do they call that? Tomisters, there's a special name for it, of hot chocolate.
Correct.
And it was, and it was gone in what, an hour?
It was good though, honey. It was good hot chocolate.
We had uh the William Parker Club uh gave out popcorn. Uh, Al Elefante and Elefante Music, they're always doing everything. Uh, incredible. Uh, Director Pamela uh then Nostrum. She uh and the uh New Providence High School Select Choir did a great job and Emma and Susan Peterson. And yeah, I want to thank our first responders. They're always there at every event we have. Uh, the Fire Department Rescue Squad, uh Police and all the donors and and contributors. And you know what? I want to thank the administration because you coordinate a lot of this stuff. And I want to thank the Borough Council because you know what? And I said it uh that night. If it wasn't for you, the council's support in doing all these activities, they wouldn't happen. And I don't want people to take it for granted because, you know, there's so many things we do in this town that others look at us and say, wow, look at what they're doing. We get like the veteran bowlers, the pumpkin carving, the scarecrows, the, I mean, the list goes on. They see us do it. They see, you know, everybody's doing it. So I just want to say thank you to to all of them and uh, you know, and all of you for doing what you do. You know, it's, it's Thanksgiving. We 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 should be thankful for what the blessings we have. And this is one blessed town and, you know, and we're blessed to have the uh the citizens we do here, so. Um, once again, thank you and I'm off my uh high horse here, so. Uh, I think that's all I have. Matt?
You're out of fire tonight. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So so finance, I missed the finance, my, that was one of our last meetings and something personal came up last minute. So uh, maybe still have an update on that hopefully tonight. Um, I attended the the recreation, I guess, put, had a little meeting for uh the Recreation Master Plan. So they had invited the public to come out and and give their ideas and thoughts on our rec master plan and uh, uh, you know, sitting in the back and I was thinking, this is, this is what makes New Providence such a special place, right? You know, I expected about four or five people in the room and I don't know, forty? Forty plus people? Um, and everyone came to not listen, but to talk, right? And everybody, and they were throwing out everything, right? Um, and I'm just sitting there thinking, you know, this, these are the things that make places like New Providence great, right? We, we listen to the residents. Uh, we can't do everything that everybody wants to do, of course, right? But we know their concerns, we know their 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 wishes and, you know, we can put them on our lists and think about them in the future, right? Um, and some of the things that were heavily talked about in that meeting, obviously, I probably don't even have to to tell you, right? But pickleball was one of them, right? Right out of the gate, a lot of people uh looking for pickleball. Um, you know, hopefully, and I know Allison's been working, you know, diligently on on trying to solve that. And and maybe we will one day, I don't know, but um, you know, our planners just go and putting together this Recreation Master Plan. So I look forward to seeing what they come up with and 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 what the public input and how it gets incorporated. That was pretty cool to witness. Um, uh, on uh our cricket pitch, I just want to say uh we should have something for us to to review and approve next meeting. Uh, I don't, I I know we got a a bid was a little out of the um, the range what we were looking for. Uh, we had another bid that came in in the range, so we're looking for, I think, another bid that's outstanding at this point in time. But I will say that uh, for what we should have that on on our next agenda for everybody to review and approve. Um, Planning Board Meeting, I missed the meeting. However, the Planning Board Meeting, um, we heard GHNP Central, which is the BD property.
Right.
Uh, so we had approved that previously and they actually um had to come back and revise their plans because the BP delineation um, you know, required them to shrink the footprint of the overall buildings. Um, and uh, um, they did not change the number of total units, so one hundred and ninety-two units there, but they actually reduced the number of three bedrooms. So that's actually a good thing for.
And two bedrooms to one.
Right.
So yeah, it it was, it was a good thing.
Yeah. Uh, I think that was it for me.
Okay, thanks Pete.
Okay, Mayor. Um, Capital Projects Committee or Capital Committee has a meeting on the sixteenth. We're gonna be going over uh an enhanced analysis that's being worked on that I I think will benefit um us here. So I think that's excited about that. Community Activities, um, the other thing I I would mention is the gazebo uh by Veterans Park. I I drove by there the other day. The base, this is the foundation we keep, but the the uh, the other structure is now down and we're waiting for the new one to to come in. So just as a reminder, that that comes from the Kid Direct Trust Fund grants. Um, finally, Sustainability Team, a couple of things. The last meeting was on the thirtieth. Uh, during that meeting, the team uh worked very hard and has been working to assemble exactly as your pre-request, um, the goals and events for the next year. So um, that's something I believe the team is really looking to get in front of council for the next, our next meeting. So just to give you a little heads up that that that's coming and and they're working hard. You know, there, there's a lot of different things that they they want to do, the team. And then finally, just uh uh another thing to be proud of, we mentioned a bunch of those things tonight. Um, the Sustainability Team was awarded uh the bronze level certification. We've achieved that level before and once again, we've achieved it. That's really something everyone should be proud of. You know, special thanks to Doug Sullivan, leading the Sustainability Team and his efforts, as well as uh all the efforts of the Borough employees that helped to make that possible. And uh, there's pretty lengthy filing, I believe, right, where you have to kind of detail all the things that are be done, done by the community to achieve that status. Things like um, our community garden would count towards that and and our green fair we recently had and our high efficiency utilities, lighting are the way we recycle. So all those go into it and as a community, I think uh everyone should be, everyone should take some pride, pride in that, so. Um, congratulations.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Business and Professional Association, uh while we're giving some thank yous, um, one of our other traditions we have here is the holiday walk. And the holiday walk was the day after Thanksgiving and um I went down with my husband and my grandson and we had an amazing time. So I want to thank the Business and Professional Association. Again, the first responders for coming out, uh for escorting Santa off of the roof of Investors Bank. Uh, was outstanding. Thank you to the marching band uh for escorting Santa um through the streets um on the back of of the, it wasn't the fire truck this year. He was on the um, on the sled. I think it's uh sled number one, it has a special name. Um, so that was a a great time. And the New Providence Presbyterian Church, uh they added an outdoor light show this year. That was spectacular as well. So again, everybody in the the Borough coming together along with the Business Professional Association made for a really, really outstanding night. Um, and something to watch out for as well, uh Santa is back in town this upcoming Sunday, December eleventh. You know him. Um, and he will be, um, he will be escorted through the town uh by our fire department again. Uh, so um, I think the way they did it last time on social media, you can see what neighborhoods he's on and where he's coming. So keep tuned uh to the uh Fire Department Facebook page to see where Santa is on the route on Sunday, December eleventh, and he will drive past every house um on all the streets. You can see the routes out there, so you can come out and wave to Santa as he goes by. We're looking forward to it and it's supposed to be nice weather, so.
I just add, so one of my favorite pictures, family pictures, is my son on my shoulders when Santa came on the roof of the bank, right, when he was two, maybe, three? And we have a perfect picture and his eyes are popping out of his head, right? Like such joy. It was awesome. It's literally one of the coolest things. And and my daughter came back from college, she's a junior in college and she comes home for Thanksgiving and she cannot wait to go downtown and walk around and see Santa and go, you know, go to the church and see the animals and and it's really a tradition that's that's grown on our children. It's awesome.
It's truly magical and it's been around uh how long, Wendy? As long as I can remember.
Let's not say it years.
I think they started that in nineteen sixty-nine or something like that. Seventy-three? I don't know. I missed it this year. Unfortunately, I got sick, so. It's the first one I've missed and I can't remember how long, so. Okay, Rob?
So this Borough is always looking for ways to improve uh public safety. So at the League of Municipalities Convention a year ago, I ran into our rep from Johnson Communications. They do all the security cameras for the Borough and all of security locks and such. Uh, but in talking to George at the time, he offered us a free like emergency call button beacon uh for us to try out and see if we liked it with the idea that hopefully we'd buy some more i- if we really did like it. So uh, talking to me and talking to him again this year, he said, oh, it's up. We just installed it. So it's now up and running and it's active at by the community pool, by the walking path. So it's there. If someone presses a button and they need help, uh they'll be connected to the uh shared dispatch immediately and they'll have a police officer out there right away. So uh, it's up. Uh, so just go out and check it out.
It's the blue.
Yeah, it's blue.
That's awesome. I saw that. That's cool.
Lisa?
Okay, um, let's see what we got here. Library Board, uh library is always busy. So they are always wanting to improve their library card holders, so to speak. And they're folks that come in and take advantage of the programs and go to the concerts and take their kids into the children's library and do some of the crafts. They're fully open. They have a ton of different activities going on. The friends of the library have a packed schedule of different concerts that are gonna be coming in. So really encourage everyone to visit your library again. It's it's a great place. They do wonderful things and great programming. Um, go get your library card and get over there. We're also in the process of looking uh for uh Lisa, our director's replacement, who will be retiring at the end of the month. So we've been interviewing for that, for that position. Uh, Mental Health and Advocacy and Education, um, we did meet. I feel like we're always meeting with them. We're, we met and they do have a whole slate of different activities uh looking forward. So for December, they are looking to to post some articles on holiday stress and how to manage um those, you know, holiday expectations and demands. So uh, we'll be looking out for those.
Eggnog.
Sorry?
Eggnog.
Eggnog works wonders, yes. Um, Finance Committee, uh we did meet and it was more of an introductory type of meeting to kind of get the finance season rolling. So it was Bernadette, Al and uh and Jim and I uh just going over some of the preliminary numbers and the expectations and putting a calendar to move forward and get that all done for the budget uh season. One of the things that we did touch on were some of the, you know, some of the differentials from last year and what we're looking at as far as costs. And I know that we've been saying it all year long that, you know, costs this year have just increased tremendously. What we're looking at is, you know, higher costs for health insurance and pensions and higher cost for recycling. You know, we, we spoke about that. So those are some of the things that are gonna be a challenge for us this year, but.
I think what we had to make that public aware of, some of our biggest expenses is health insurance.
Yeah.
Um, the municipalities are getting hit with a twenty-two point eight percent increase. The, not only municipalities, but the counties. State employees are only getting a three percent increase. Now, I don't know how you could possibly justify that. Everybody should, it's the same pension. Everybody should be paying the same. So it should be like ten. It shouldn't be twenty-two. Everybody should be paying about ten. And I know the New Jersey League of Municipalities and and the uh New Jersey Conference of Mayors are are fighting to get Governor Murphy to change his mind and equalize it. Uh, it's it's just not right. And I always, I I always say, people have good intentions, but they never realize, you know, it it all filters down to the municipalities, to the Board of Educations and to private industry. And you know, something like this is just blatantly unfair. And yeah, the state may save a little money on their state budget with this, but the local municipalities, your property taxes are going to uh, you know, go up. And they think, oh, it's no big deal because health benefit costs are outside of the cap restrictions. You still have to pay it, folks. We still have to pay it. And it's blatantly wrong and I I hope we can get this thing changed. Um, I know a lot of people are working hard on it, so that's all I have to say about that.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
It's a big, big challenge. Um, all right. So I have one more thing. You, Al, you were talking about traditions and I think another great tradition is the scouting for food. That happens every Saturday before Thanksgiving. So this was the first time that it was back um in its original form since pre-pandemic. Yeah. So not, you know, not back a hundred percent as we saw in twenty nineteen, but still very successful. Um, we had a total of eighty-four volunteers there, so it was a great synergy between the Boy Scouts and Faith Lutheran and Community Service Association and and residents from town that showed up to help. It was. and, and residents from town that showed up to help. It was, is really amazing. Um, they, we packed a total of four hundred and two boxes of food. And if you equated that to a dollar value, it's about thirty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars worth of food was collected. Uh, forty percent of that went to New Providence residents. All right. So that's significant. And that's an increase from prior years. So we're seeing a greater need for help right, right here in town. Uh, the rest of those boxes went to, uh, Plainfield, which is a, a food pantry called Starfish. But we also did a really good job of, um, stocking up Link and stocking up OLP Food Pantry. So anybody that does have needs in town, please, you know, visit one of those two food pantries. Um, they are well stocked right now. Uh, we collected, we donated twenty-five turkeys. Half of those were donated by Matt. Thank you very much. Uh, twenty-seven pies that were made by the foods class at the high school, uh, were distributed. So, you know, all in all, very successful and again, just demonstrates the generosity and the big heart that this community and these residents have. It's, it's really an amazing, uh, feat that day. Like, it's just incredible. So, thank you. Yeah, yeah.
It's magnificent lately.
Quite a production to see. This is my first year inside the church and just to see that production was just amazing.
Okay, that's it.
Status quo. I don't really have anything to say.
Where's that at?
Um, two things for me. Uh, one, I just, we wanna remind everybody that our recycling quarter is changing in January. If you have the opportunity, please download the Recycle Coach app. Um, this way you will, A, know what is recyclable, but more importantly, what day it is going to be your new day. Um, the calendar has gone to print. So if anybody's asking about the borough calendar, it's at the printer. It will hit the mailboxes shortly after it, it gets back from the printer. So it should be out in time for the new year. And then the last piece that I have is that the police department is finalizing its last piece of accreditation. Um, our police department is, is, um, this will be the sixth time that our police department is accredited by the state of New Jersey. Um, we're one of only, I believe, two, um, municipalities that have that longstanding, um, designation. On Tuesday, December thirteenth, um, the examiner board is asking for employee and or resident input if you would like to call into the hotline, which is nine oh eight six six five one 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 six on Tuesday, December thirteenth between ten and eleven. You can, um, give comments, um, to the assessors on the NJSA COP standards. So it's, it's not, it is an opportunity for you to address things that are happening, um, as it relates to the standards that they're being credited for. Um, it's something that our police department is very proud of and as a community, we are also very proud of.
Well, that borough calendar that's being mailed out, will it have the updated dates for the receptive?
Yep.
You always know who, when I walk my dog, I, nope, they don't have Recycle Coach.
They don't just look at your house?
The app is great. It, it does send you reminders, even, you know, it, it is very specific to your house, um, so your side of the borough regarding garbage and any other things that are picked up throughout the year. So it's, it really is an invaluable tool. I recommend it to everyone.
Oh, one thing I do want to, leaf vacuuming ends this week on the east side. Now they will be picking up bags, you know, paper bags or, uh, containers, uh, on the twelfth. That's next Monday. After that, no more.
It's yours until spring.
Yeah, but is it April?
Yes.
April first.
Something like that.
So everybody be mindful of that. And, um, I think they'll say everything's down now, you know? So.
Thank God we didn't get any snow. It's almost still worse when it snows and those things are sitting.
It's happened. It's happened. So.
DPW's done a great day. We came by Woodbine Circle today and I was walking the dog this morning. It was a nice clean street. It was nice. They did a great job.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, why don't we have, um, public comments? Anybody wishing to address council? Give their name and address. Seeing no one, I declare in public here and close. Uh, let's go to formal action. Uh, need a motion for action. Uh, need a motion for items one through seventeen on the lease.
Second.
We'll call, please.
Aye.
Mr. D'Sonah.
Aye.
Mrs. Joffre.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight. Yes. Mrs. Bliss. Aye.
Okay. Um, I know we don't have, our next meeting is the twentieth and I know Hanukkah starts before the twentieth. I think Sunday on the eighteenth, right? So we wanna wish our Jewish friends a happy Hanukkah. And, uh, just a great, great time of the holiday season. So, well, let's, uh, yes.
If we could just mention also that the next meeting is gonna start at eight P M. as opposed to seven thirty.
Yeah, I don't, I, I did with the menorah lighting, but, uh, yeah, it will be eight o'clock, uh, on the twentieth. So at this, I, uh, declare the, uh, motion for, all favor?
All right.
Madam, so, yeah. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.